There we go. All right, good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. The Township of Warminster Board of Supervisors for Thursday, June 8th, 2023. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and women and civilians serving overseas. Okay, thank you. All right. First announcement is that we had, the Executive Board had an executive session right before this meeting to go over some litigation details. And I think I believe that was it. There was no personal.
Unreal property.
Oh, unreal property, okay, sorry about that. Welcome, everyone. I hope everybody had a nice Memorial Day. I know the parade was a great time. See Harry and John are here. Great job once again. Hope to see you next year, John. Anyhow, that's all I have. Kathy?
Ditto. I thought the parade was great. You guys always do a bang-up job. And it is really a great memorial for all the fallen soldiers. And I think it's a beautiful thing that we do here in this township. And anybody that was involved, thank you very much because it was a major group effort. And I want to thank everybody that participated. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few park and rec announcements. The Warminster Symphony Summer Pops Orchestra Free Concert in the Park will take place this Sunday, June 11th, at 7:00 p.m. And that's in the Hollow Oak Pavilion. That's the pavilion up closest to Ann's Choice. You come in off of Veterans Way for that one. Bring your own chairs, blankets, and join us for an evening with the Pops. Light refreshments will be available for purchase, but outside food is also welcome. Alcohol is not permitted in the park, though, however. Community yard sale scheduled for August the 19th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Warminster Community Park. To register your space, please go to warministerpa.myrec.com. And registration is still open for the Philadelphia Phoenix Ultimate Frisbee Camps, June the 26th to the 30th, July 17th to the 21st. Registration is open for Mad Science Mini Camps, scheduled for several weeks throughout the summer. There's no specific date on that, so I guess you'll have to go to my rec for that one. Sponsor vendor information and booth registration for Warminster Day, which will be held September 23rd at Warminster Community Park, is available online at warministerpa.myrec.com. We moved it from June until September this year, so we're hoping to get a little more participation. And we're definitely looking for sponsors because we lost a few from last year. So anyone that's interested in being a sponsor or renting a vendor space, please go to myrec.com. And also Representative Brian Monroe is hosting an e-recycling event on Saturday, this Saturday, June the 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Warminster Community Park Runway. Please use the Bristol Road entrance for that one. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Janice?
I just want to say it's a great spring. All the kids are home from school officially as of today, so be careful when you're out and about in the community that you're watching out for the kids because they are not watching out for you. So please be careful.
Thank you. And Judy?
Yeah, I just want to announce that the Ben Wilson Community Senior Activity Center has finally finished their HVAC system. The system's all new, yes. We've been working on this for a year. And so you can go to the center this summer without roosting to death.
And in the winter without freezing.
Well, that's not done yet. The generator's not there yet.
The generator is only for when we need to use it as emergency. Yeah, that's completed as well.
The heat is done too, yeah. And the library, they're doing lots of outreach at the library, a lot of new stuff. If you haven't been to the library lately, you should go. It's a lot of fun. The bids are going out for the bathroom upgrades this week. And we're having a special Juneteenth celebration, but not on June 19th, on June 24th. And it's going to be Harriet Tubman. There's going to be an actress there who is going to portray Harriet Tubman and teach people about it. It's only an hour. And it's $7 per person, so you can get your ticket at the library. It should be very interesting. And I wanted to tell you that 150th Anniversary of Ivyland is on the 23rd and 24th of June, ending with a wonderful outdoor concert from the Warminster Symphony. So try and be there in the park.
Thanks, Judy. All right. So we have a fairly large crowd here tonight. And I know we're, most everyone's here for the swearing-in of our new police officer, Michael Giann Tomaso. Hope I pronounced that correctly. So I'll ask the Honorable Judge Dan Finallo. Yes, the Chief. You're right. Where is the Chief? There he is. You were hiding in the back. Come on up and give us a little rundown.
Good evening. I'm Jim Donnelly. I'm the Chief of Police for Warminster Township. It is my privilege to present Michael R. Giann Tomaso. I've been practicing that name all week. And then someone gave me a nickname. It screwed me all up, so I didn't want to say that. Michael was born and raised in Huntington Valley. He attended Archbishop Wood for two years, and then he graduated from the illustrious Archbishop Bryan High School, where yours truly graduated from in 2016. Upon graduation, Michael's one of four children. Upon graduation, Michael attended Montgomery County Community Police Academy, where he put himself through the academy at 18. He graduated with his ACT 120 certification in 2017. He then attended Montgomery County Community College, where he graduated with an Associate's Degree in 2018. Michael then attended Pierce College at Philadelphia, where he graduated Magnum Cumulati with a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice in 2021. December of 2021, Michael was hired by the Philadelphia Police Department and attended Philadelphia Police Academy again. And he was, he graduated, and then he was assigned for the last nine months to the 35th Police District in Northwest Division of the City of Philadelphia. So with that, it is my privilege to bring Michael forward with the judge and have him sworn in as our next police officer.
All right. The green light's on. We had a great presentation with all these Archbishop Wood people here sitting in the front row. And of course, on the other side, we have the Italian family. And, you know, so you always get a large gathering when you have an Italian family. But I want to welcome Officer Giann Tomaso to the Warminster Police Department. I'm sure he'll be a great asset. The Chief has given you a resume, very impressive, and I'm certainly going to wish him well. And it's always a pleasure to do this. This is one of the better parts of my job because, as you know, sometimes it's not so pleasant. But this and weddings are probably the best thing I get to do. So Officer Giann Tomaso, would you like to introduce the lovely lady next to you?
This is Kathy Giann Tomaso. It's my mother, and she's my number-one supporter.
They usually are. Okay, so without further ado, put your right hand, put your left hand in Bible rather and raise your right hand. Sorry about that. Okay, repeat after me. I, Michael Giann Tomaso.
I, Michael Giann Tomaso.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge duties.
And I will discharge duties.
A patrol officer.
A patrol officer.
In Warminster Township, Bucks County.
In Warminster Township, Bucks County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I also swear.
I also swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race, color, sex.
Of a person's race, color, sex.
Religious creed, sexual orientation.
Religious creed and sexual orientation.
Age, national origin, ancestry.
Age, national ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap and disability.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations, Officer. And a lot of your colleagues are spread throughout the room. I'm sure they'll all support you and whatever you need, I'm sure it'll all be at your disposal for help. And I look forward to seeing you in court, okay? Not as a defendant. And I would welcome my Archbishop Wood people here for their great achievement. And I want to thank you very much. And thank you, Michael, for your honor of letting me swear in. All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you, your Honor. Yeah, why don't we take a short recess? And so we can take some photos with the family? Hold on. Where'd he go? Mike?
Three, we the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warminster community honor and congratulate the Archbishop Wood High School Girls Basketball Team on their PIAA 5A State Championship. Congratulations, girls. I'd like to bring up, and coach. So we have Wendy Young, who's the coach of the team, and we have two players, Cara Murrith and Delaney Finnegan. I'd like to present this to you, and congratulations again, well deserved.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, come on, let's get a picture taken with the girls.
All right.
Congratulations. All right. Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations.
Have a good summer. Have a good summer.
Enjoy.
We're having a blast tonight. All right, one more that's in, that's in order. I'd like, I'd like to, John Gruber has been helping and doing the parade and coordinating that for years. How many years now, John?
Since 2018.
Since 2018? Yeah, and he's been done, he's done a tremendous job, and we just wanted to show our gratitude. We have a proclamation for, for you as well, John. So we, as the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township Bucks County, Pennsylvania, thank the veterans of forum wars post 6493 and Mr. John Gruber for their dedication to the people of Warminster. And whereas Mr. John Gruber has served as coordinator for the Warminster Memorial Day Parade for five years, during his tenure as coordinator, Mr. Gruber and VFW Post 6493 have provided support and guidance to the Warminster Memorial Day Parade, which has been an illustrious Warminster tradition for decades. Well deserved. And whereas VFW Post 6493 and Mr. Gruber have demonstrated exemplary commitment to the Warminster community through their involvement in the organization and operation of the Memorial Day Parade. And now, therefore be it resolved on this eighth day of June 2023, we, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warminster community, honor and thank the VFW Post 6493 and Mr. Gruber for their service to our community. So I'd like to bring up Harry DiLorenza and John Gruber. I hope I didn't cut in on your bingo time. Thank you, John. Thanks for all your hard work. Harry? Great to see you. Thank you again.
Thank you guys enough. Seriously. Thank you so much.
Thanks again, John. I appreciate it.
So what do you say we get?
Thanks, Harry.
Have another photo.
Yeah, let's get a picture with the fellow.
Then bingo.
I was calling the numbers.
Harry?
Not working the fourth.
It's us, you, Harry?
Yeah, at least I'm calling the numbers.
Harry's the man. Scott? All right. Both serve.
Come on, Judy.
Come on, Judy. Come on. All right, great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks again.
Where's the show?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Great. Thank you. I won't sit down.
I almost sat in his chair.
Yeah. What is this, musical chairs?
Yeah, I almost sat in Dennis' chair.
Then they play music and one, a chair gets taken away.
All right, congratulations to the VFW Post and Mr. Gruber.
See you, Kathy.
The Archbishop Wood Girls Basketball Team, and of course, our new officer, Michael Gian Tomaso. Okay. I know. This next one's going to be real quick. All right, so there's no land use matters, public hearings or ordinances. So now we'll open up the floor to public comment. Anyone? One of them.
I just had a new replacement here, so.
Oh, yeah, I just had one too. Yeah.
Six weeks out. How much, much?
Um, yeah, a little longer. I feel great.
Do you?
I hope you, yeah, it comes along quick after those six weeks.
Yeah, my six weeks doesn't.
Good. So introduce yourselves.
I want to thank you guys for taking the time to talk with us. My name is Scott Bailey, and this is my wife Helen. And we've been Warminster residents for 22 years. And I wanted to, our visit here today is basically twofold. I wanted to explain to you an issue I had with my property, and the second part is I was hoping maybe we could come to some sort of resolution to take care of such a problem. We take much pride in our neighborhood and our house, and we try to keep things nice. In January, we had some, not us, my neighbor had worked on it at home, Verizon, I believe it was. I came home to red flags off the front of my, my lawn marking the electrical lines, which I work construction, I run a crane, I understand things need to be marked and so forth. But I wasn't expecting the hundred-foot of spray paint, bright red spray paint from one end of my property line to my neighbor's property line. So this was in January. So I figured it's usually done in water soluble paint, so I gave it six, seven weeks. Nobody came out to retrieve the flags, nobody came out to clean the mess up. So I took it upon myself to call the name, the number that was on the flag posted on my front lawn, USIC. Explain to them the problem, could you please come out? Not my problem, we subcontracted that. Okay, well, who did you subcontract that to? A company named Baruch.
Baruch or Baruch Cable Company.
So I called them. We tried to take care of the issue by myself without having involved anybody on this board, and they basically told me to go pouncing. So a couple more weeks went by, I decided, let me call the township, see what they can do for me. So I spoke to a very nice man, Jimmy Valentine. He explained to me, I can help you, Mr. Bailey, there's a process we need to go through. I'm going to file a complaint, we're going to come out and take some pictures, and we'll take care of it for you. No problems, Valentine. I don't want to climb up your butt. How long do I, do I give you two, three weeks before I bother you again? Two, three weeks went by, all of a sudden, I'm ghosting. I get no return phone calls, my wife left voicemail after voicemail, nothing's going on after her promise that we would be helped.
The pictures were taken.
Pictures were taken.
Pictures were taken.
The places the inspectors came out, is it?
Yep.
I don't know who it was, I was at work, I don't know who took pictures.
From my front window, it appeared to be Jimmy Valentine.
Okay.
Taking pictures. He said he would take pictures and whatever happened to those pictures, I don't know, because we got gifts today for that. That was him.
So you want to explain the name?
Right, so after, I work at home, so I can make phone calls during the day, so when Jimmy wasn't getting back to us, I called him several times, no return phone call. I popped over to the other line office, so maybe you could catch him in there. He wasn't there, just stepped out, and maybe saw me coming, maybe saw me pull up and ran out the back door, I don't know. But there was a woman very nice there, Kathy, who was not normally in the office, she told me, but she was answering the phones that day. Explained the situation and said, you know, I can't get a hold of this Jimmy, and she was appalled, because she said, oh, that's so unlike him, I can't believe he hasn't called you back. I will find out, get back to you this afternoon. By the time she called back, called him back, and I don't know who she talked to, it was, Warminster Township can't do anything for you. You can see your neighbor, you can, whatever. Out of it.
Now, who does Jimmy work for? Is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's the office on Bristol Road, that's where, because, you know, Warminster Township, I don't know the packing board or who to call, I got somebody on the phone who was more than willing to help.
Yeah, quick question.
Yeah.
Who told you that there was nothing the township could do? Jimmy?
That was me. That was you?
Oh, that was you too, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Scott, I appreciate you getting back to me by email, too. I did, before I talked to you, Kathy said there was nothing that could be done, and then I tried to get a hold of you, but I ended up getting your confidential secretary on the phone, Jill Mares, who said, send me an email, that you wouldn't see it, that Lisa would. Lisa responded, we can't get involved in this, and then you said this was a private matter that we don't get involved in. But then the next morning, you sent me another email, it says you were reaching out to someone.
Well, I told you, we would make, we would see if we could call whoever, whether it was Buck Rice or the other one, and see if we'd get a hold of them.
Right.
And find out whatever information they wanted to share with us. But yes, my, I did not want us involved. That is correct.
So I, I hope you can appreciate my point of view. You know, these were contractors that operated in this township. They came on my property, defaced my property, and now I call subcontractors, subcontract Verizon and Township. One man at Township, Jimmy tells me there's a process, we can help you, and then I get the next message that now you can't help. So I'm confused as to what's going on here. Like, I'm not asking for anything that I don't think we're entitled to, I would just like my property restored to.
Well, here's the thing, the township has, enforces a code, right? And it's adopted by, by ordinance. I think Mr. Valentine was looking into it to see if there was any code violations. He concluded, I'm assuming there wasn't, because it's not a code violation. Now, the other thing that they were trying to work on, and I think I'm saying this correctly, was, was the work that was actually done at the neighbor's property, did it require a permit? And if so, did they get one? The, the normal stuff they check on. I'm, I think, as far as I know, they concluded it wasn't, and they didn't. So at that point, the, the, LNI's role had to stop because they have to do the other things they need to do. They, Lisa's the in and out of there all the time, they could have just told her, hey, could you let the Baileys know that? There's nothing we can do for them.
There was no response like that.
Right.
Well, we're sorry that, that happened.
Right.
As far as the flags go, you can just remove them and throw them in the trash.
Oh, I did.
Yeah.
I, I did, that's, that's not.
Yeah, you're talking about the, the paint.
He did use the spray paint.
Yeah.
That's been there since January.
And it's water soluble?
It's not.
It's not water soluble.
It's bright red as the day was put down.
They said it was supposed to be, but clearly, we've had a lot of pelching rain, it hasn't fudged.
Now, my, my whole thing with this is, you know, there must be at least five people that I've been, been involved in the phone calls, the emails, your time, everyone else's time, when, how much would it cost to send someone to come out and power wash? What's a township?
We're not doing that. Mr. Bailey, we're not doing that.
Okay.
So can I, can I ask you, can I ask you why, why no one's responsible for defacing the front of my property?
We're not a court, we can't make that decision. Who's responsible?
Well, for one, for, hold on, for one, we didn't do the work. If we did the work, we would come out and power wash it the next day.
Okay.
So this is a private company that's not contracted with the township, but perhaps our solicitor can come up with a solution.
Yeah, because we didn't, we didn't do the work, we didn't.
Yeah, I, I understand why you're here, that's okay. We're, yeah, we're.
I'm just, I'm just trying to come to a sensible thing here, like, of all the resources that have been wasted so far, with five people getting involved, what's a township, like twenty-five, thirty bucks an hour? Somebody could have came out, spent one hour, power washed the walkway, and I, I wouldn't even be here tonight. I just don't see why, I don't see why this is faulty. I don't see why.
Well, I can tell you why it's, I, I can tell you why, because if, if we send the township Public Works, who have a million other things to do, and, and we don't have the resources to hire more of them, that we would be power washing everybody's sidewalk. So that's why we don't get involved. It's a private contractor, now maybe the private contractors are what I'm saying to my, to our solicitor here, maybe the private contractor who was hired by Verizon, they're, they're the ones that are liable for this.
Yeah.
Not the township. So, you know, we would, we would wind up having Public Works power washing everybody's sidewalk. For all we know, people would be spraying them just to get them power washed. You know, it's just not, it, it's not our responsibility for that. However, I would like to see if we can do something for you.
I would really appreciate.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to have something done for you, yeah.
I would really appreciate, that would be, that would be nice, you know?
I mean, sure of sending our Public Works out there, because you understand our position there.
Sure.
It's, it's a private company that did it, now maybe we can put a little pressure on them from our end to have it done.
I would appreciate anything you can do.
Yeah.
You know, long, long story.
Yeah, I mean, that's really, that's, if it's, if it's, you know, markouts, if they're not done in the right paint.
Believe me, guys, I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off.
That's good.
Believe me, guys, if this was at any one of your houses, your wife, your spouse would not be too happy.
Dude, furniture'd be flying around. Oh, yeah.
And look at this, Sunday day guy.
No, I understand.
These are, and I'm not blaming you guys, these are contractors that are operating in this township.
Yeah, I, I get it.
That's not right for them to come in and deface my property.
Well, that's what they did.
And me being told, screw you, you're, you're done. That's not right.
That's actually what they did, they defaced their property.
That is what they did, and that's not right. I'm coming here asking you guys for help, and to just be told, oh, you know, we're not going to do anything, I just don't feel that's right.
Well.
Now, is it, is it just, it's just on the sidewalk or in the grass still?
All the way from my property lawn.
Not the neighbor's.
But my neighbor, who had worked on.
Is it in the, is it in the sidewalk?
All the way down.
Is it on the concrete?
Hundred feet on my concrete.
Those sides of driveway.
Straight paint, a hundred feet all the way down the front of my house, and I got to look at that every day? That's not right.
And what do your neighbors say?
I understand that.
I'm sorry?
What have your neighbors said about it? The ones that actually got the work done?
They didn't say anything about it.
Uh, they're, they're brand-new neighbors from Ukraine, so there's a, there's a language barrier, I don't speak with them too much, it's tough. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just upset about what's going on here. And, you know, long story short, I have, I've been very lucky, I had, we called. I had two children grow up in this neighborhood for fifteen years, they're grown men right now. We went to Willdale, we went to Log, we went to Tenet. My kids played sports from Tivo at five-years-old to eighteen-years-old in Monroe Field. I spent hundreds of hours in this community, serving this community. Field day, building backstops and cages at the field, doing everything. I'm just asking for a little reciprocation for maybe one hour from someone to help with my property. That's all I'm asking, guys. I don't think I'm, I'm being unreasonable, and I appreciate whatever you can do for us.
Is there any process that companies like this that come into the township don't have to tell us what they're doing or anything? They just come in and do what they want and leave?
That, that's.
I mean, I, I understand your point, I do.
How are they operating in this township?
Unless you need a permit, you don't have to.
Well, can we?
You don't have to.
I mean, I've called in a million markouts in my house, and they used the right paint. Right. Now, I don't know who this was, but they're, it's their responsibility to, to clean it. Think we could help him out and make a phone call? Yeah, well, that's what I just asked.
We're trying to, Mr. McKee, we're trying to do that, ladies and gentlemen of the board, but as the, as the Baileys of our experience, it is a lar, it's a very large organization, and we're, we're trying to get a hold of somebody.
Well, in case people are watching at home, what's the name of that company again?
USIC.
In case they're working in their neighborhood.
They're everywhere.
USIC, they're, they're, they're all over the place.
They're in my neighborhood, yeah.
They're just one of the subcontractors. Then they said, oh, screw you, we subcontracted it out to Baruch. I tried, guys, I tried handling this on my own.
Yeah. Well, I think what we can do, here's, here's what I would suggest if, if I'm in the realm of legality here.
We hear your frustration.
Oh, I, I don't blame it.
We do.
No, I get it, I get it. I would be upset too if somebody did that. So if we, if we can, let me know if this is, if this is within our legal purview. If we make these phone calls and we basically get lip service, what if we cleaned it and then we'd have to take them to small claims court? Is that, is that something? Because the only way you're going to recoup the money is to clean it and charge, and go, go to small claims and charge them for it.
I have a pressure.
We probably wouldn't be able to do that as the township to get the money back. Certainly, if they were to do it, they could, but that's not what we're looking to do here. But yeah, the township would have a hard time doing that.
The point, the point is, what I'm trying to say is, I appreciate.
But there are other things I think we can do.
But these contractors should not be allowed to be doing business in this township, going around defacing people's property, it's wrong. It's wrong.
I don't disagree with that. I mean, you're supposed to use, you're supposed to use the right mark of paint. As a matter of fact.
Your house next, or yours?
Well, I don't know why they used.
I've never seen that kind before, that's terrible.
I'm telling you, I gave it since January, I'm, I'm familiar with, with the paint that you're supposed to use.
Right.
It's not water soluble.
It's clearly marked on the can.
It's my language, it ain't coming off.
Right.
It's skin so soft.
All right, we'll, we'll figure, we'll, we'll help you.
Well, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
And we'll make note of this company.
Baruch.
Yeah.
I don't know how to spell it, I'm not sure.
Sounds shady to begin with.
Yeah, they're out, they're out in where I believe it was either USIC or Baruch, out in Aston, PA, which if you know your geography.
I think it's Buck Rice.
Buck Rice?
Buck Rice is the name of the company.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that company, and, and they're going to have to mark with the correct paint.
I think ultimately, it's Verizon's responsibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's Verizon's responsibility, regardless of who the subcontractors are.
And they say, well, we sold.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of things Verizon does. They shut down roads and don't tell us, and all kinds of things. They like to take up freshly paved roads. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And jackhammer up freshly paved roads, right. And then don't, then don't hot seal the, the seal, or the patch.
So once again, I don't want to be climbing up anybody's.
I appreciate that.
You're not.
So do I give you another three weeks, another month, another, what, who?
Someone call us?
Who do I call, or is someone going to call me and say how we made out, or I didn't make it out?
Well, it'll be Lisa or, or some, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out.
We'll do right on this, we'll have someone call you.
We'll have somebody call you.
Well, I appreciate.
In the next week.
It's on tape, it's on record, you don't need to worry about it.
If not, we'll see you at the next meeting. If not, we'll see you at the next meeting. Yeah, yeah. Next meeting, it's not going to be on the fourth, so.
There's important things to do in Warminster, and, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because you're, I appreciate your understanding.
I'm pissed, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Is there something we can do to, in our ordinance, to make it to where Verizon and other contractors have to stop by LNI before they do work?
And he's got a point, that people can just come into townships without, I mean, not our full, you know what I mean, I get it.
Verizon is, operates under a certificate of public convenience.
But they're, but they're subcontractors.
Unless you're doing work, unless you don't work, it requires a permit by us, then they don't need to.
They have right of way on your property.
That's a shame.
They have right of way for the.
Yeah, they do, and, and by law, you have to mark out, but you need to use the correct paint.
But you have to use the right house, see, they, they weren't even at the right house.
No, it's, it's the house, they have to mark out a certain distance.
So when you call, when you call a markout in, you give them street, you give them between certain streets, and they come out and they mark pretty much everything.
Okay.
Our water department comes out, communications, electric, sewer.
Yeah, all this stuff washes away.
Water. Gas. Yeah, but all this stuff.
All the other ones would have been marked out too, and just this paint is now left.
Right.
Right.
So they used the wrong paint.
Avon, Skin So Soft takes care of all kinds of paint, that's what I told her.
Including mosquito blades.
Yeah.
All right.
Hi, Pat Boyle, Centennial Station, I'm the secretary of the William Tenet Alumni Association, and I just want to let everybody know that the deadline for applications for the alumni, for the William Tenet Veterans Wall of Honor is on August 31st. Anyone who graduated from Tenet, or attended Tenet for two years, or worked in the Centennial School District, who is honorably discharged from the service, is eligible to be on the Wall of Honor. You need to submit your name as you'd like it to appear on the wall, your email address, your phone number, the year you graduated from Tenet, your branch of service, and you can send that to tenetalumni@gmail.com, and I'll get back to you. All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Pat. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated May 4th, 2023, and 890 York Road Phase 1 improvements, release number one from the escrow account, the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, or one hundred and twelve thousand, eighteen dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments from the public? Let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five-oh. All right, Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, I'll ask for a second, that we approve the bill list dated May the 18th, 2023, in the amount of one million, seventy-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and twenty-four cents, along with the supplemental bill dis, bill list dated May 31st, 2023, in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, for a total of two million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll second.
All right, sounds good.
Any questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five-oh. All right, consider appointment of Barry Isat as zoning administrator. We had just released our previous zoning administrator, Tom, you want to take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Barry Isat and Associates currently run the LNI office for us, and they started there and right before Christmas, and we want to fold the zoning, the zoning permits and the zoning administration with regards to permits and zoning hearing board applications into their portfolio as well. We didn't work, the last company we had, it didn't work out too, too well, but we're hoping that they have people that are capable of doing this, and everybody being with the same company, everybody down there will be able to pitch in on this as well. They, they provide zoning services to several municipalities in, in Bucks County, and, well, we think this is the way to go, we would recommend that you appoint them, and we would sign the, they kind of already started because.
Will they be assigning an individual as a zoning officer?
Well, they have.
For fifteen years, we're grown men right now. We went to Willdale, we went to Logg, we went to Tenet. My kids played sports from Tivo at five years old to eighteen years old in Monroe Field. I spent hundreds of hours in this community, serving this community. Field day, building backstops and cages at the field, doing everything. I'm just asking for a little reciprocation for maybe one hour from someone to help with my property. That's all I'm asking, guys. I don't think I'm being unreasonable, and I appreciate whatever you can do for us.
Is there any process that companies like this that come into the township don't have to tell us what they're doing or anything? They just come in and do what they want and leave?
That's my point.
I mean, I understand your point, I do.
How are they operating in this township?
Unless you need a permit, you don't have to.
Well, can we?
You don't have to.
I mean, I've pulled in a million markouts in my house, and they use the right paint. Now, I don't know who this was, but it's their responsibility to clean it.
Can we help him out and make a phone call?
Yeah, well, that's what I just asked.
We're trying to, Mr. McKee, we're trying to do that, ladies and gentlemen of the board. But as the valleys of our experience, it is a large, it's a very large organization. And we're trying to get hold of somebody.
In case people are watching at home, what's the name of that company again?
USIC.
In case they're working in their neighborhood.
USIC, they're all over the place.
They're in my neighborhood. They're just one of the subcontractors. Then they said, oh, screw you, we subcontracted it out to Baruch. I tried, guys, I tried handling this on my own.
Yeah, well, I think what we can do, here's what I would suggest if I'm in the realm of legality here.
We hear your frustration, trust me.
I don't blame you.
No, I get it, I get it. I would be upset, too, if somebody did that. So if we, if we can, let me know if this is, if this is within our legal purview. If we make these phone calls and we basically get lip service, what if we cleaned it and then we'd have to take them to small claims court? Is that, is that something? Because the only way you're going to recoup the money is to clean it and charge, and go to small claims and charge for it.
I have a pressure.
We probably wouldn't be able to do that as the township to get the money back. Certainly, if they were to do it, they could, but that's not what we're looking to do here. But yeah, the township would have a hard time doing that.
The point is, what I'm trying to say is, I appreciate.
But there are other things I think we can do.
But these contractors should not be allowed to be doing business in this township, going around to face people's property. It's wrong. It's wrong.
I don't disagree with that.
I don't disagree at all.
You're supposed to use, you're supposed to use the right mark of paint. As a matter of fact.
Your house next, or yours?
Oh, it's ours.
Well, I don't know why they used.
I've never seen that kind before, that's terrible.
I'm telling you, I gave it since January, I'm familiar with the paint that you're supposed to use. It's not.
It's clearly marked on the can.
It's my language, it ain't coming off.
Right.
Okay?
It's getting so soft.
All right, we'll figure, we'll help you.
Well, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
And we'll make note of this company.
Baruch.
Yeah.
It sounds shady to begin with. Sounds shady to begin with.
Yeah, they're out, they're out in where I believe it was either USIC or Baruch, out in Aston, PA, which is, if you know your geography.
I think it's Buck Rice.
Buck Rice?
Buck Rice is the name of the company.
All right, we'll, we'll look into that company, and they're going to have to mark with the correct paint.
I think ultimately, it's Verizon's responsibility.
Yeah, right, it's Verizon's responsibility. Regardless of who the subcontractors are. Yeah, well, there's a lot of things Verizon does. They shut down roads and don't tell us, and all kinds of things.
They got freshly paved roads.
Yeah, 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 and jackhammer off freshly paved roads, right. And then don't, then don't hot seal the seal, or the patch.
So once again, I don't want to be climbing up anybody's.
I appreciate that.
You're not.
So do I give you another three weeks, another month, another one?
Somebody call us?
Who do I call, or is someone going to call me and say how we made out, or I didn't make out?
Well, it'll be Lisa, or, or, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out.
We'll do it right off as well, someone will call you.
We'll have somebody call you.
Well, I appreciate you.
It's on tape, it's on record, you don't need to worry about it.
If not, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, next meeting, it's not going to be on the fourth, so.
There's important things to do in Warminster, and, you know.
I appreciate that, because you're, I appreciate your understanding.
I'm pissed, so thank you.
I don't blame you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Is there something we can do to, in our ordinance, to make it to where Verizon and other contractors have to stop by LNI before they do work?
And he's got a point, that people can just come into townships without, I mean, not our fault, you know what I mean, I get it.
Verizon operates under a certificate of public convenience.
But they're, but they're subcontractors.
Unless it don't work, unless it don't work, it requires a permit by us, then they don't need to do any of that.
They have right of way on your property.
That's a shame.
They have right of way for the.
Yeah, they do, and by law, you have to mark out, but you need to use the correct paint.
But you have to use the right house, they weren't even at the right house.
It's the house, they have to mark out a certain business.
So when you call, when you call a markout in, you give them street, you give them between certain streets, and they come out and they mark pretty much everything.
Okay.
Our water department comes out, communications, electric, sewer.
Yeah, but all this stuff washes away.
Gas, yeah, but all this stuff washes away.
All the other ones would have been marked out, too, and just this paint is now left.
Right, so they used the wrong paint.
Avon Skin So Soft takes care of all kinds of paint, that's what I told her.
Including the skeet blades.
All right.
Hi, Pat Boyle, Centennial Station, I'm the secretary of the William Tenet Alumni Association, and I just want to let everybody know that the deadline for applications for the alumni, for the William Tenet Veterans Wall of Honor is on August 31st. Anyone who graduated from Tenet, or attended Tenet for two years, or worked in the Centennial School District, who is honorably discharged from the service is eligible to be on the Wall of Honor. You need to submit your name, as you'd like it to appear on the wall, your email address, your phone number, the year you graduated from Tenet, your brands of service, and you can send that to tenetalumni@gmail.com, and I'll get back to you. All right?
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated May 4th, 2023, and 890 York Road, Phase One Improvements, Release Number One, from the escrow account, the amount of $112,018. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments from the public? Let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, I'll ask for a second, that we approve the bill list dated May the 18th, 2023, in the amount of $1,072,309.24, along with the supplemental bill list dated May 31st, 2023, in the amount of $1,275,665.67, for a total of $2,347,974.91.
I'll second.
All right, sounds good.
Any questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. John?
I will be quick, because it's good news again this month.
That's what we like to hear.
All right, John.
Overall, on the general fund, through the end of April, revenues are up $544,000. Last month, they were below last year. The good news is that it's kind of trending the same it was, transfer taxes are down, EIT revenues up about 10%. But the reason for the increase was building and electrical permits are up $780,000 compared to last year.
Nice.
We got two very big permits come in for two projects, so that's kind of what shot us into such a good situation. On the expense side, we're only up $41,000 in expenses. So revenues being up 544, expenses only being up 40, we're looking pretty good. Compared to budget, we're at 28%, last year we were at 27%, so we are tracking the same as last year, which is great. Operation wise, hopefully this time next month, we'll have our audit in hand. The auditors were out here for a day and a half, and then they just said we don't need to come back out, they had everything they needed. So I'm waiting for the drafts to come in, we have to do a little bit more work, but then hopefully by this time next, next month, we'll have them. And a message from Bobby, because she is at the tax collectors' meeting. As of today, there is 585 parcels outstanding, out of 10,000. We're at 94.1% paid compared to 92.3% last year, so we are ahead of last year's collection, so everything's looking good on that end.
Thank you, residents.
Yes, and that's all I have.
Thank you, very refreshing to have a manager, financial manager, that knows exactly what he's doing and gets things done ahead of time. Thank you for that, John.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Audit's on the way, huh?
That's, it's fantastic, that's what happens when you put quality and qualified administrative people in. Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Yep, balanced budgets, it's amazing what you can do with a balanced budget.
Yep, it is.
All right, no one finished business, new business. All right, we're going to consider approval of the Sterling Act Resolution, Resolution 2023-19. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, everyone knows what the Sterling Act is? John, or someone wants to give us a real brief description?
Yeah, the Sterling Act is just a law that allows Philadelphia to retain earned income tax, even from people who live outside the city. Normally, under an unearned income tax law, you remit it to where you live. In the case of Philadelphia, they were allowed to keep everything. This is to remit the portion that should go, normally go to Warminster. It's a, there's an act going on, a bill in the General Assembly to amend the law to help out the surrounding municipalities.
We can use all the help we can get. All right, any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, and chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, consider appointment of Barry Isat as zoning administrator. We had just released our previous zoning administrator, Tom, you want to take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Barry Isat and associates currently run the LNI office for us, and they started there and right before Christmas. And we want to fold the zoning, the zoning permits and the zoning administration with regards to permits and zoning hearing board applications into their portfolio as well. We didn't work, the last company we had, it didn't work out too, too well, but we're hoping that they have people that are capable of doing this, and everybody being with the same company, everybody down there will be able to pitch in on this as well. They provide zoning services to several municipalities in Bucks County, and, well, we think this is the way to go. We recommend that you appoint them, and we would sign the, they kind of already started, because.
Will they be assigning an individual as a zoning officer?
Well, they have two or three people that are, excel at it, and, but everybody there is going to be involved. All the employees that they have there are going to be involved with helping with applications, helping with questions, helping with.
That was my next question, that there'll be someone in the office that's able to answer these.
Yes, so they're going to have, right now, they have, and I, I don't know if I announced this at the last meeting, if I did, right now, they have, they're able to get a full-time clerical assistant to work there, plus the three inspectors that they have, Mr. Costello, Mr. Valentine, and I don't know Justin's last name. But, so anything that requires a little bit more brain power on the, for the zoning thing, we do, they do have zoning professionals in their stable. Mike, I tell you, the guy was here a couple of nights, every once in a while, is one of those people. So they're going to be able to deal with, you know, the rudimentary questions, the basic stuff, the basic reviews and whatnot, on a day-to-day basis, with the current people we have there now.
Okay, understood.
Is there a, did we have a motion?
No, no. I don't think we have a motion.
No, Judy just motioned, is there a second? Okay, any other questions or comments? I think it's good that we're going to streamline everything under one roof.
Yep, I agree.
All right, any questions from the public? All right, let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Okay, consider rejection of bid 2023-03, Public Works Above Ground Storage Tank Upgrades.
Yes, I'll handle that.
Yeah, you will.
It's not good news, so. Tom's making me good. We recommend rejecting the bid number 2023-03 for the above-ground storage tanks due to, we need complete bids, and also, we'd still like to see more competitive bids, so we're recommending you reject that, and then the next item on your agenda, I guess I will address as well, so that's our recommendation.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All right, any questions or comments from the public? Let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh, and now.
And then, I'll take that, I will recommend you re-advertise it. I'm not going to say we're going to rush and go right back out, I think we need to work with a couple of the vendors and try to find the right fit for this project, it's just not large enough. I think you and I discussed this, so what we'll do is, we'll try to work with some, even including the ones that, that have been bidding, try to get complete bids, competitive bids, and I'm not going to commit to a date of the bid process yet, but I will update you next meeting on our progress.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, when I motioned, I said I motioned for both, both are.
Okay, we'll separate them, so we'll take the motion for this.
Motion.
Okay, second, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so complete bids, everything has to have a complete bid, that's just as simple as that. If you're not putting in a bid that's complete, then it gets rejected, so. Any other questions or comments from the board, from the public? All right, let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Okay, here's, here's one that, finally.
You've been working hard on this.
Yeah, we have, for three years, even though it's been going on for 20.
Yep.
Consider approval of agreement between Hartsfield Fire Company, Warminster Township Fire Company, and Warminster Township. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Kathy, all right. Just want to say that Joe, as our emergency management director, and chiefs, and the, and the board directors from the volunteer fire companies, we sat down, had several meetings, we, I was, you know, I've always said, if we can afford to pay for things, we more than happy to do that, but we're not going to go bankrupt, like almost happened before when we took office. So I'm thrilled to announce that we're going to hire three full-time firefighters. And Joe hats off for helping out with the negotiations and moving forward with everything. And Chief Shapiro couldn't make it tonight, and I'm not even sure about Chris McDonald, he might be, he's working as well? Okay, so at our next meeting, they will be here, and we're going to, we're going to have a little fanfare, because this is a long time coming, and it definitely helps the public safety during the day. So I'm thrilled that we did it, we got it done.
Just one, one question, Mr. Chairman, did you break bread with Mitch yet?
Not yet, it's coming.
I told him we'd have a sheet cake at the next meeting.
Reminds me of the pictures of Nixon and Brezhnev.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Daytime, daytime.
You know, Mitch and I were always on the same page, we knew, you know, he, he wanted firemen, and I knew we needed them, and just had to figure out how to pay for them. You know, when we first took office, we had to figure out how to plug a $2.5 million shortage with nothing in reserves. That was priority, and again, with, with good administrative staff and a good financial director, and, you know, the contracts that we negotiated with, with everyone, it, it helps. It helps us pay for things without raising taxes. We were forced to the first time, first year I was in office, but that was, sure beats going to Act 47.
Sure does.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Oh, we did already went through it. Yeah, 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 see, I'm so thrilled, I don't even know what I'm doing.
We'll do it again, we're so excited.
Any comments from the public? All right, let's call a question all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh, I'm, I'm really thrilled that we got that done. Again, Joe, thanks for all your help. Okay, professional reports, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I don't have much to report this month, except to say that the, the, just to follow up on the last, and the fire companies, I believe the fire companies, they're governing bodies, have also approved the agreement. So the next step is, the three organizations will sign, and we're trying to get that done Monday or Tuesday. Additionally, did you put your hand up?
No. Thank you.
Additionally, we, we, well, how can I put this? The generator problem, I didn't want to let this on the side, is a separate project from the HVAC. So when we use, when we have to use the Wilson Center as an emergency shelter, like if it, you know, snow or choking, everybody's choking on the air, it's not, it's currently not connected to a generator, so if it loses power, our emergency shelter will go black. The generator itself will be brought in and attached to the Pico gas line for that purpose. It's, it's independent of the HVAC system, and because of the fabrication backlogs, it's, it hasn't arrived yet. But the HVAC system is up and working.
That's the most important part when you get coming towards.
You want to go to the shoe pool, it probably means a lot, yeah, thank you. That's all I have, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Holbert?
Thank you, I got nothing to report tonight.
You mean you didn't raise your hand?
And Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have a June report, the, actually, it is in our report, but I just wanted to let everybody know, because I get a lot of questions asked, the road paving portion of the program, road program is done, substantially done. Andrew and my staff are working on, will be working on the punch list and final payments. And then the concrete curb ramp work is scheduled to start June 19th, so you'll see NJS again. We've been passed several years, we'll be out there, starting on June 19th. That's the only update I have.
Okay, nice, Greg. All right.
Thank you.
Any announcements for the upcoming agenda items?
Well, it sounds like we're going to be talking about the audit at the next meeting.
Yep. All right, would anyone?
Nobody left.
Nobody's left.
Anyone care to change the meeting date to the 13th for, for the July week?
We did that at the last meeting.
Oh, we did that at the last meeting.
Yes, the next supervisory meeting is July 13th, I'm sorry.
That's what I was looking for, I'm sorry. That's what I was fishing for.
July 13th.
Okay. Just so everyone knows.
Everything between then and now has been moved or canceled.
I'm worried about you there, Ken, you're slipping.
It's called, it's called work in 24 hours. Planning Commission also canceled their meeting, there was no land development ready for Planning Commission, which means most likely your July meeting will not, unless something comes back in that needs to go on, so they canceled their meeting as well.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, second round, public comment, anyone? Okay, just wanted to thank everybody for, for being here tonight, and I'm thrilled that we, Chief, I just saw your report, it looks great. I think, you know, things are on the right track, and what do we have, one more police officer that's?
Well, we have one governing the county July 5th, but Sergeant Valerie's retirement at the end of June will be one, probably before that, before he graduates.
Okay.
So.
So we're replacing a retiring officer?
They're in the background right now, and then we should have the results of the sergeant's, lieutenant's exam next week sometime.
Okay.
So, things are moving.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Sure.
Chief, the, as the, the program with the county that we're involved with, Warrington and Warwick, for the.
Co-responder?
Yes.
Co-responder started, I'm funny, fucker.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
We don't want to put you on the spot.
I think it was your report, but.
The co-responder.
Started with the county June 1st. She's in training, she was selected, she's in training for the next two weeks. And then she'll go to the individual police department, she's going to be housed at Warrington, so she's going to start there, and then most likely she'll come to us, because we're the busier of the three, and we'll get her up to speed on our systems, and she'll be busy.
Yeah.
So, but she started, she just started with the county June 1st, and we're moving forward.
Yeah, hopefully that's, we get a positive outcome of that.
It's working elsewhere, Ben Salem, I haven't heard anything but good things from the upper end, and the north end, Newtown, and all I believe, they have one, too.
Right.
So Middle Town and Falls, Middle Town and Falls has one. So, and I think she's in this 15 days, June 15th is when she's going to Warrington. Those 15 days, she's starting in the county this week, and then she's moving through all three or four sections where there's co-responders.
Okay.
So she comes in and she has a better grip of what's going on.
Good.
And what they expect.
Good, and then we'll be, we'll be replacing a retiring officer.
Yeah, Sergeant Faudry, Carol Faudry, everybody knows it as Sergeant Battistini.
Yeah.
She, her last day was last Friday, her final, she's running time, her final day will be June 30th, after 27, 20, almost 28 years, because she started as civilian and went through. So we're working on other things for her with Brian Monroe's office and other places.
Good for her, yeah.
Bring her in and recognize her when we can.
Well deserved, and then, of course, as you said, because you were in the back, so we're, we have the fourth officer.
Yes, he starts, yes, he's bilingual, he reads, writes, and speaks Spanish, first generation. We're put, we're putting him in the academy, he's a graduate of college. I was going to have him here tonight, but he's, before he goes in the academy, went on a family vacation with his mother and father. So he's due to start July 5th at Montgomery County Police Academy, and that'll be five months, and we'll bring him on. He'll probably graduate November 19th, I think is the date, and then he'll be sworn in, and he'll start FTO then. But with Sergeant Carol Faudry leaving, we've already started the background on the next set of candidates, and then we have interviews next week, plus we have interviews, oral exams for the sergeants' promotions and the lieutenants' promotions, so.
Okay, sounds like all good news.
Yes, he'll be busy.
It's moving, it's changing over.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll see, it's, and there's more, more people entering the drop, and more people retiring, so we'll see. Not me, I can't go nowhere, I got to pay for college.
And that's good to hear. All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, so, as again, thanks for everyone for being here, and we appreciate the input, and hopefully we can help some people out that are a little upset. And again, as Janice alluded to earlier, it's, it's summertime, the kids are out, they're not paying attention. So as a driver, stay away from your cell phone and look at the road, because it's easy to hit somebody when you're not paying attention. All right, that's all I have, Kathy?
I'd just like to say enjoy your summer, and I'd like to also say, make a comment in what Ms. Charlton has said, too. Those side streets, people go flying down, and as, as Ms. Charlton said, you've got kids on bikes, they're running around, and they're not looking for you, so we need to keep an eye out for, for them. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, more? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple, I'd like to wish my son, Jack, a happy 30th birthday, June 14th, Flag Day is his birthday. He's doing quite well, and his mother and I are both very proud of him, so happy birthday, Jack, if you're watching. And I also got a message from our co-star, John Preoval, who spenses regardless and apologizes that he can't be here. He had a surprise visit to his house, but he is watching, so.
All right.
Sorrowly miss tonight, John. That's all I have, have a nice summer, too, by the way, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Janice?
It was nice, this past weekend, we went out to the 100th anniversary of our fire company for Hartsfield, that was a, a great event. It was nice to see the different machinery from the different, from way back, and the pumpers and the, the hand pumper, and it was, it was just a great experience and chance to meet our firefighters, but for Warminster, Hartsfield, of course, was there, and then surrounding areas, it was nice, nice group of people came out.
Good to hear. Judy?
Oh, everyone, I wish you all have a happy July, a good Fourth of July, stay safe. And I wanted to just announce that the state has made this week Union Organizing Week. So I want you to know that Warminster wouldn't be half as full as it is with middle-income people, a lot of middle-income people. Unions created the middle class, so yay for unions, they help us all.
And you know, Judy, I know, I noticed that all the building trades are all looking for people to apply for apprenticeships. Any one out there that, that, you won't make a better living if you're not going to school?
Yeah, Bucks County Community College has an apprenticeship program going on for trade union people that want to graduate from high school and go into a 18-month, I think, program.
Yeah, there's a joint program with the building trades.
It's a joint program between the trades and Bucks County Community College.
You'll make a decent living, and you'll retire with dignity.
So happy Fourth of July.
All right, thank you. And by the way, don't worry about me, I just need to get some sleep.
Oh, okay.
It's been a rough two weeks.
I can relate to that.
It's tough living on one and two-hour sleep, you get a little forgetful. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, good night.
Patty, don't forget to.
A little slow tonight, huh?
No, stop.